Five thirty on Monday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty. This is a committee of the whole of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. This is a public meeting of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. Copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources who have requested notice of our meetings. Superintendent, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Toni Schmidt has a work engagement tonight, and she will not be joining us, but we do recognize the quorum of the board tonight. Being a committee of a whole, we've got a handful of different discussion items tonight, and Superintendent, why don't I turn it over to you? You can kind of explain what we're going to talk about tonight.
Yes, to begin with, we're going to have some growth projections from the Village of Jackson, the city of West Bend, as well as the Washington County Economic Development to just kind of give us a perspective as to what we see as housing starts, as well as some economic development. And typically, I would then go right into some facilities planning because it goes hand in hand, but I'm assuming that that is going to be a lengthy discussion. And so there are several things that we truly believe that we need to have. We had scheduled early on a short report from the elementary schools, and so they'll go about six o'clock or whenever our growth projections are complete. We're going to give a short overview of the teacher salary framework, and then Dave is going to talk a little bit about the planning for the twenty-five-year plan, and then we'll get into some of those facility questions as well. And so typically, we have tried to keep our committee of the whole meetings to about two hours, and so that I would assume that at seven-thirty, we're still going to be asking some questions, and we'll probably need to either decide we're going to go later than seven-thirty, or we'll continue those type of questions at our next board meeting. And so that's the format, and so, board members, any questions? If not, I believe I have Mike and John on first with the Village of Jackson. And so I appreciate you being here tonight and all the correspondence we've had over the years, and if you could introduce yourself and take it away.
Good evening. My name is Mike Schwab. I brought along our administrator, John Walther, to answer any questions I can't cover. I appreciate being able to go first on the agenda. While everybody's fresh, on the other hand, I kind of feel like the warm-up band for the warm-up band, you know? But here we are, and we'd like to share some things with you about the Village of Jackson. Right now, the Village of Jackson has seven thousand one hundred eighty-seven residents. I like to say we have, they're all nice people except eight, and the eight depend on the day and who you're talking to, right? At any rate, if you go to this slide, I'd like to give you a brief overview of the Village of Jackson, what's going on in the various areas. We have maps up on the board. Up on the upper left is one of the developments that we're going to talk about. Right above the, and I'm going to walk over here just for a second. One of the areas that's developing is here, another one of the areas is up in this area, and then a few that we'll talk about are in this area, going across and down in this area. Some of these have already been developed and will be annexed to the Village of Jackson. Some of those have areas that are part of the Germantown School District, but that might be an opportunity that students would want to transfer and use the West Bend School District. Go on to the next one, please. So this is our TID six. It's on the west side of the Village of Jackson, just north of Hasmer Lake. There's a development there. The slabs are already in place. The foundations are already in place, but that will be a seventy-two unit development in that area. Going on to the next one, please. And that's the pads of the seventy-two unit development, Rosewood Development in our TID six. Again, a seventy-two unit development. If you could go to the next one.
Is that multifamily?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This is Laurel Springs. This is at the corner of Jackson Drive and Cedar Creek Road. This is in addition to an existing development. There are another forty-five homes going in in this area. And then, go to the next slide, please. Across the road to the north is Creekside Development.
Creekside Village.
Creekside Village, excuse me. There will be nine two-family condos going in that area. So there's that development. And then going on to the next slide, which is Morning Meadows. This is actually, it's not, it should be vertical, but because of the way the drawing worked out, this is an eighty-four family development. It's all going to be single-family homes. It's set up to be a conservancy style, which is very attractive. It's on ninety-two acres, so really set up for larger homes and a lot of green space and walking space. That one's in development as well. Before we get to, this is our TID seven, which is where our municipal building is going, just to show a little bit of this. Spruce Street is right here, going across. Spruce Street will connect with Eagle Drive. Our municipal building has been built in this area, and we anticipate that there will be some housing development along here, single-family homes, and finish out those subdivisions, and then probably the multi-family, a couple of them in that area as well.
Mike, if I could ask on that picture, can you give us a frame of reference as to where the district's current property is in relation to that parcel, please?
District's current property views, over in this area. I think the lake comes around this way to the community center. It's near the district property. There's more of it in the community.
Thank you.
Spruce Street would go right on the north, on the north side of the district property. And then go on to the next one, please. And there's just a picture of the planned municipal building, and again, so there are a couple areas in here that we don't have pictures of. One of them is Cottlestone Creek, which is a twenty-two, twenty-two-lot home site that's in almost the southwest center of the village. And if any of you are familiar with the Glenbrook area, it's south of that subdivision, and that is also going to be a nice development. And just south of that before Sherman Road is, there's another apartment building. It's going to be a forty-eight family. And then now, this one is in the very southwest of the village. This subdivision is actually in the Germantown School District, and I know a lot of school boards chafe when their students go to open enrollment to other districts, but this might actually be an opportunity if there's a school in Jackson that would draw people from Germantown into the West Bend School District. This is a hundred and twenty-five unit development. So when we're looking at the things that are development, these are all things that aren't just pipe dreams. These are things that are already in the works. Some of the foundations are already in. Some of the work has already been done. Right now, the typical dwelling in Jackson has two-point-three residents, so if that carries through with all of these, these are another four-hundred-and-fourteen units. That would be another nine-hundred-and-forty-two people. Add to that, in two thousand and twenty-one, the village will be annexing approximately three-hundred-and-fifty properties, and if that ratio holds true of about two-point-three people per household, that would be another eight-hundred-and-five families. So we're looking at, over the next two to three years, probably about seventeen-hundred-and-fifty additional people in the Village of Jackson. Here's our growth projection from our latest sewer pack and comprehensive plan. When you look at the two thousand and thirty center, the intermediate growth scenario, that is about nine thousand, but since we're in two thousand and twenty now, and with the additional seventeen-hundred-and-fifty people that we're expecting in the next two to five years, we believe we'll probably hit that intermediate growth mark well before that. And if you could go to the last one. So this map, is there any way we can expand that? This map shows the areas that we already talked about. The seventy-two family here, the eight-two family condos, forty-five, eighty-four family here, house, excuse me, house and condos there, apartments there. This is the area that's in the Germantown School District. All these areas where there are question marks are areas that really aren't right for residential development. We don't know what might happen there, but we have had inquiries while people are wondering if land is available for development and what it might take to develop. So those are possibilities. And can you show on that map where Sherman Road is?
Yes, sir.
For those of you who don't know, Sherman Road is the southbound of the school district. And where Sherman goes, it's key. And so that's where Sherman is, right where that's at, you're key there. So certainly want to make sure everybody knows that if the district turns toward, that they will be available for districts or students' college district. And buildings are going to be used for someone else's students. And in seven, we certainly hope that there will be some families that will officially be moving to our district because of the needs of the district. And doing it for them, that once it's built because of the needs of the district, then potentially that kind of capacity issues, certainly.
This is maybe a question for Don or for either of you. So this subdivision that you're referencing, that's potentially in the Germantown School District. So there'd be no busing available to West Bend students. That would be on parents' own getting the students there, correct?
Andy, that's correct. Typically, we do not bus out of district. Is that right?
It's actually illegal for us to transport in or out without both districts approving. So if we wanted one of our buses to enter into Germantown, you would have to approve us going in. They would have to approve us going in. So otherwise, we don't have that. What is allowable is a pickup point within the West Bend School District where families can go to. Typically, it's somebody else's, a friend's, neighbors, whatever, within the school district, but that's what would have to take place.
So for instance, on this map, when you're looking at that, and I apologize, you might have to go up to the map, but can you show us exactly where the West Bend District, so it ends on Sherman Road?
Right.
And then this new subdivision that you're referencing is number one-twenty-five on here?
Yes.
So it's what, how many blocks, the entrance of that subdivision to Sherman Road, approximately? What are we talking, mile, less than a mile?
Less than a mile.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Mike, how about, you know, this is strictly housing, and housing's what provides kids. Is there much in the line of economic development other than housing that's taking place currently in the village or in that area? So non-housing starts, but commercial starts, so there are some things happening in the village there as well?
I'm going to turn that over to John, John Zmore, up on, people who approach him and look for information.
We have, we have new, we aren't building as much, but we, in our northwest business park, we have, we just have started an online, excuse me, on-demand transportation. It's a trucking company that's going to be going in there. We have, we have another business that's planning to actually bring some high-tech, high-tech storage, which is, which is interesting. But we, we are trying to recycle some of the property we have. We do have a developer that is, is working in the area. In fact, he's built probably well over forty million dollars in our northwest business park. We have started TID number six, which, which President Trump has alluded to, that, that TID number six, the kickstart for TID six is, is that, that multifamily housing on the south side. We've had inquiries relative to some, actually a twenty-five-acre parcel in that area. So we're starting to get inquiries there. And then also in, in TID seven, that we're, we will be carving out about eight acres of that, of that farm, what was a farm, for our, our municipal complex, which will be the police, fire, and village hall all in one. And we expect there to be commercial development in that area. We're hoping for restaurants. We're hoping for a number of things. Coffeeville, we had hoped to be the catalyst to that area, and there are some potentials in that area for the, on the commercial end. But we are, we are still, we're not having a lot, we're moving along.
Okay, good, thank you. The only other question I have, if you could make sure and forward me your presentation, then I'll put it on board. We'll make sure we get it on board docs for, for the public and for everybody to see.
It's on your system.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, I have a question, and if you don't have the data tonight, that's, that's fine, but could we get a new housing start breakdown, say, for the last five years? Just to kind of see what the curve is and what the quantity is for the village? Great, thank you.
Mike, John, is it important that the village have a public elementary school within the village?
It's very important that the village have an elementary school. When you look at the number of residents we have, and then, and just the transportation costs to send all those kids to West Bend, A, a lot of people don't like to send their kids too far away. They like a neighborhood school, and, but then there's the cost of it as well. But I think the Village of Jackson, even by not having our own school district, has lost a lot over the years. You look at, at the Slinger School District, you look at the Germantown District, there's a lot of community identity in having your own school system in the community. Now, I'm not suggesting that, that we go off and do that. That would really be an incredible expense in labor and finances and everything else, but by the same token, it is very important for the Village of Jackson to have a school. I mean, when you think about this, when someone drives through the Village of Jackson and they see Jackson Elementary where it is right now, they don't say, wow, the West Bend School District really should clean up that school and make it look better and really improve that. They say, Jackson Elementary is kind of looking kind of rough. And so it is important for the Village of Jackson. It's important for people getting ready to move in. It's important for the people who are already there. It's important for the future. It's important for the kids. Yes, we absolutely believe that an elementary school is vital for the Village of Jackson.
Okay, since Don asked you, or Joel asked that, I'll ask you this. Do you think the property that the school district owns right now is the best place to put it when you look at your future growth in the village and your surrounding communities?
Yes, we do. And the reason is because it's very close to the community center where the kids come to the Boys and Girls Club. It's very close. It's, it'll be, right now, the situation where the school is, it's not really safe for parents to pick up and drop off kids, especially for before and after school care. Getting it in the new location would be much better. It'd be much safer for the kids. It would eliminate having, kids having to cross Highway sixty to get to the Boys and Girls Club. In my mind, yes, it is very good. And it would also be close, then, to the Police and Fire Department if there are those needs.
Just one last comment on Joel's, you know, been my philosophy for years and said it many, many times. We believe a quality school is critical for a successful community, and we believe a successful community is critical for a quality school. I mean, it truly goes hand in hand, not just with Jackson, but with the city of West Bend as all as well, that we truly want the city to be prosperous because we think when the city is prosperous, that gives us an opportunity to be prosperous as a school district. And the more successful the school district is, the better it is for the communities in that school, within that school district to be successful as well. So it really is a hand-in-hand scenario.
I said a question about the existing school, and if the school were to be moved, obviously, that would leave a vacant building, but it seems to be an interesting location. Could you comment on your optimism that that could be put to productive use? Would that be an attractive location? Would it be an attractive property? Or is it something that would be detrimental to the, to the village?
I think it really depends on what's done with the, with the building and how long it takes to do it. I think right now, the history of the Village of Jackson is that almost any property in the Village of Jackson is valuable and can be put to good use for the community and for the benefit of the, of the greater community. The, it would take some careful planning to make sure that whatever happens with that building is done in a, in a timely and orderly way. But if, I mean, if it's sitting there for fifteen years, obviously, that's no good for anybody, right? But if it moves forward and is repurposed in a reasonably quick fashion, there's no reason that can't be a vital addition to the community.
If you look at the, there's a cross-tached, a cross-tached section here. I don't know if you can see it, the pointer's not on there. You can see right in the middle, there's, there's a bar of cross-tache. The village, within the last two years, the village has gone through a redevelopment analysis. We're all part of a correlation of, of communities in the county of, for groundfield grant development. And, and we, we engaged Van DeWaal and Associates to do a redevelopment analysis for the Village of Jackson, and that, that particular, that particular area there, and actually, south, including the Village Hall, the current Village Hall, and south along South Center Street and North Center Street, is, is prime redevelopment area, and that's actually marked out to be mixed-use development. We believe it's a perfect, it would be a perfect area for mixed-use development if that, if that were currently, if that's where it is.
One more question, probably more of a crystal ball, but obviously, you're the village, and you have townships that are surrounding the village. As you're looking at your annexation for the future, or what properties or areas you feel might be looking to annex into the village, can you point to the map on where you see your future growth?
I'm going to turn that over to John.
For equal reason I do. I work all day, right? He doesn't work all day, too. There's, there's, there's a lot of potential for commercial growth as you go to south on Highway Key. South on Highway Key, this is, this is actually the, the town of Polk. This is a, this is an area that is just contiguous, obviously, to the, to the village. And, and we look at that as being prime commercial property in the future. We also can look up north. There's, there's about fifty, fifty-two acres of land up in this area here. Now, we're not sure, that's owned by Aurora right now, but that's also, that's also a lot of, of commercial, prime commercial-type land. As far as, as far as residential, these areas here, this is outside of the Village of Jackson. This is in our sanitary service area, though. And, and this is, this, this is a hundred and sixty acres or eighteen.
Is that the Town of Jackson, then?
That is actually the Town of Jackson.
Okay.
And if anyone were to develop that, they would be coming into the village because they would want village infrastructure there. We currently, this, this property here, this is now property that's going to be coming in on February first of this next year. But this property, this is already in the village.
Sure.
So this is where, where some great potential is. But again, outside of the West Bend School District, we've got, we've got plenty of room. There's, there's plenty of opportunities. We have to put up a plan, though. We can come up, we can come up here, right in this area here, that was actually, that's right across from the Fair Park. That's prime land for actually the residential. That's again in the Town of Polk, but that would be coming into the village undoubtedly. There is also, right in this area, this, this was to be developed, speaking of the, 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 the top. That, that was all planned for, for village infrastructure, but in the downturn of the economy, that really went back to, it went back to an egg use. But as you see, it's still in zone. It's, it's going to be zoned residential. So that's getting, that's another, it's, it's based on a hundred and sixty acres there.
Okay.
So there's, and we also, again, we can, we can run our water straight up Jackson Drive to, to hook up other areas of the Town of Jackson, which there's plenty of, there's a expansion. Our, our water will, will be able to put the power high-pressure zone. Doesn't mean high-pressure, it means elevated pressure zone.
Got it.
But, but it is, that's up in that area, so we got plenty of potential for a lot of good development.
So most of the growth in that you're suggesting, or potential growth, not that you're suggesting, but potential spots would be Town of Polk and Town of Jackson?
Town of Polk and Town of Jackson. Well, those are the towns that surround us.
That surround you. And, I mean, really, as we're looking at this, you're talking about a lot of southern growth, some northern as well, but, but more southern from what I'm understanding. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and thanks for the information.
So I had, originally had Christian next, and certainly can. Christian, the only question I have, and I don't want to shortchange your amount. Adam is here from the city, and they have a, a city council meeting at six-thirty, and so he needs to be back shortly after six-thirty. Do we, do you want to, and I don't want to, is that all right? Sorry about that, Christian. I didn't want to tell you before you got here because I didn't want you to have a no-show, but I, thank you.
All right, looks like I got tagged in. All right, I'm Adam Gitter. I am the Economic Development Manager with the City of West Bend. Quick update on the city. Our city property values have returned to pre-recession values. Commercial and industrial uses are exhibiting steady growth. Residential growth has been slow and has not returned to pre-recession rates. So, but we have seen an increase in multifamily development and a lot of inquiries for that. It's been predominantly in senior housing and some workforce housing. Cedar Community is an example of that with their duplexes. Those are in the city. And Barton is the redevelopment of the school, is the workforce housing. And that was actually led by, well, a lot of that was spearheaded with the county and that SRC Committee that John was talking about. So a lot of proposals in TID twelve, which is the old former Gale Site, and a lot of higher-end market rate as well. You may have seen a new building downtown in our central business district. Urban Vantage is the name of the group there, and Quam Engineering was the driver behind that, and also with the cast iron development there. So a lot of increased investment in our central business district, while at the same time, a lot of larger investment in commercial and industrial. The City of West Bend has a new TID coming online, TID fourteen. That's a two-hundred-and-sixteen-acre parcel on the southeast corner on River Road and NN, and, well, the northeast corner, but southeast corner of the city, River Road and NN, two-hundred-and-sixteen acres. And also, we have seen in two thousand and nineteen, larger investment, Aldi's Badger Packaging, the Barton School Apartment Project, that's an eight-point-two-million-dollar project. You guys might have heard we have a new fleet farm, if that's made news. Twenty-five-million-dollar investment, even the historic theater. They're a two-point, well, two-point-eight in the beginning, but rising above three-million-dollar investment. So we've got that. And then if we go back to two thousand and eighteen, with those are the projects that are finishing up right now. Frederd has made a twenty-six-plus-million-dollar investment redevelopment of their site. One or two quick trips are making the move in, maybe even more than that. And Morrie's Honda, I mentioned Quam Engineering, and even West Bend Medical. Some doctors are investing in our downtown. So a lot of commercial and seem to be additional industrial reinvestment in the city.
You mentioned home values are back, but not necessarily the growth.
Correct.
So you're looking at new home basements, Doug, or what do you, how do you factor that? New homes, new home builds?
Correct. So if I just go straight off of the, our building inspection report, and then, single-family, two thousand and eighteen, twenty-two, well, two thousand and nineteen, sixteen, well, two-family units were thirty-two and eighteen, but you've got to divide that by two because it's per dwelling unit on there. And then multifamily, two thousand and eighteen was just ten units, well- And then multifamily, 2018 was just 10 units, well, 2019 was 40 that came online.
Do you have any proposed or potential areas of the city that are primed for single-family or multifamily growth? I mean, it sounds like, obviously, it's been slightly stagnant, but, I mean, are you anticipating, you know, for instance, in Jackson's proposal, they were pointing out potential future development. Do you have anything like that in the city?
Well, for what we have proposed, we're seeing-
Well, maybe in your master plan or something, what's the next area ripe for, you know, what do you see in the next five years?
Sure. In the next five years, I would say it's pushing more towards the east side, out on 33, and then going out that way, you're gonna find probably some single-family residential, but a lot of it is gonna be multifamily-driven. That's kinda where the market is, or that's what our market's telling us right now.
But on Highway 33 going east as opposed, sorry, as opposed to going north, so, I mean, you're really seeing most of the density happening in the east area of the city?
Where I would see it pushing out towards more as the residential area-
Right, for new growth.
For, if we take 33 and we go west, we're gonna, I would project a more commercial boom happening there.
And what about, I don't know, off the top of my head, what the road would be for the south border? I mean, what are you seeing, I mean, are we pretty maxed out to the south?
Off of Paradise?
Sure, wherever the borders are, I don't know.
Sure. Well, that's, so the south border, that's where we've been focusing a lot of our attention on it with the new industrial park. But if you're talking about residential-
Mm-hmm. Really focus on residential growth for what we're looking to determine, correct?
What you're talking about, yeah, absolutely. And, single-family's just been steady, and multifamily, they're trying to go into more denser areas, and good, well-planned growth, you're going to build up your infrastructure and try and focus on that, instead of trying to really push it out as far as possible.
Nancy, there is quite a bit of growth just to the north in that development past Salisbury, but I think that's all in Kewaskom. I don't think, you don't go very far north of the town and you're in Kewaskom. So I know there's quite a few new houses going up in those developments, but I believe that's all the Kewaskom School District.
We are a slow and steady-growth community. Take a lot of pride in our planning.
Great. Adam, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Christian, you're up. And I do have some handouts for the board, as well as a few extras, and so, as Christian gets lined up, I'll hand those out to you.
I have seven left, and so I'm just gonna send them back here, and first one, you can come and get them, or I just can hand out a few, but I only have several, I'm gonna hand them down. Here's the balance.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much for the invitation this evening.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate the opportunity and your interest in learning more about what's going on in the economic development world. Where our friends in West Bend and Jackson were speaking to what would be what we call economic development, lacking indicators, meaning, we're looking at the housing starts, they're here already. So what I wanted to do was to shift our conversation with you today to more leading indicators, rubbing that crystal ball a little bit, letting you know what we're seeing on the horizon, the types of development centers, and more importantly, the impact on you and your growth and some of these key considerations that could be going on.
Christian, if you could use the mic, then we can have it for the recording, I don't wanna keep you in spot, but that does allow us to let the press have their opportunity to have.
Those who know me well know I don't stand still too easily, but I will try.
I know, I know, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. In any event, I've, I see some familiar faces here, but also several new faces, so I'll just give a real quick background on myself and the organization and why we're in front of you. I've been engaged in economic development for well over 20 years now, got started in Slovakia, but have been, have spent nearly half that time here in Washington County. So, you can tell, I love it here, and the opportunities are really, have been never-ending, and we've been really, been able to successfully advance some key strategies going forward. As far as EDWC goes, we are an independent nonprofit development corporation that partners with the public and private sector as our customers. From the private sector side of things, we tend to work with companies that are leaders in their respective industry. Over 95% of the companies and projects that we work on are existing businesses here in Washington County. So, slightly different strategy than some other development groups that are focused a little bit more on the shiny sparkly stars outside. We do that, we do that well, but the majority of our customer activity is right here inside of Washington County. And to that respect, there's really three areas that we're engaged with, within economic development and the companies and communities that we work with. We're helping them through, by creating this platform of growth. We're working with them directly on projects, as you can see here, and their performance, enhancing their performance on their specific development projects that they are engaged in. We also work with them on an organizational-wide basis, on helping them enhance their performance, which drives future economic development projects in Washington County. And last but not least, we serve as that connector between their companies and our communities, and driving overall community performance higher as well. We do that by focusing in on our core values, which you see there, won't go into any detail. This is a company that happens to be located in Germantown. They really get to the essence of what we're doing, which is to wow the customer, to provide them best-in-class service right here in Washington County, so they don't have to look outside the county for economic opportunity. We do that through a broad-based team that has a variety of different expertise, won't get into who they are from a resume perspective, but suffice it to say, they bring literally decades of development experience right home here in the county. This is our secret sauce, yes, we give it away, because we think it's pretty hard to duplicate. Where we really excel is both on the front and back end of this curve, and you'll see that in some of the things that we present. We really work hard with the companies to uncover what's gonna matter for them, what's gonna make them successful here in Washington County. Craft that, structure that deal, craft that opportunity, but then, on the back end, we work with them to successfully execute, and that's really what drives the difference here with EDWC. I'm gonna start off with, on those leading indicators, by doing some benchmarking, and looking ahead at where growth is happening in the county and how growth is happening. We need to understand, do we have the conditions for growth to even happen? And one way to do that is through some benchmarking. Very recently, the local newspaper picked up on a source that we're continuing to do our due diligence on, but from everything that we can tell, it's probably one of the better sources for really understanding economic growth locally, particularly as it relates to output, and then comparing that nationwide. The key is, how do we compare nationwide and statewide? Gets to be pretty hard to find that information. The headline for you on this is that Washington County is literally one of the leaders in the state and the country in terms of GDP growth at the county level. You can see that in terms of the state of Wisconsin, we are 10th in GDP growth, and even nationwide, we're in the top quarter in terms of rankings, which is really pretty darn outstanding. And when you look at some of the other areas that were strong, such as the Incoming Investment Index, without getting too complicated, it basically states that we have a significant, we're ranking towards the tops in terms of new investment that is coming into our area economy. And what matters out of this data is one key point, and this is something that we look at very carefully, our strategy is aimed to achieve, and we're excited to be able to say that indeed, collectively, collaboratively here, we are achieving that. And that's to not just move people around, move opportunities around, but actually grow the size of the pie. And if we grow the size of the pie, that means that we're reducing the burden of the costs of services and quality services, like a great educational system, on each individual taxpayer, because we're spreading it out across a bigger-sized pie. And when you do that, we draw future residents into our area and future economic growth. And that is done through new money. So the more that we have businesses that are exporting, meaning they are selling their products outside of Washington County, the more that there's new money coming into Washington County, and that is an area that we strategically focus in on. Commercial development is wonderful, you need it, you've gotta have it, as is residential development. However, once again, it would be the tail wagging the dog if we were to focus in on that area. We need to focus in on opportunities that are putting money in people's pockets, so that they have the opportunity to frequent the places that are here, and we can, if I had a nickel for every time somebody wanted or asked for an Olive Garden, I would be retiring by now. They work on numbers, they don't work on, we have a great community, everybody has a wonderful community, they work on numbers, our job is to move the needle on those numbers. What can we learn from this data? There's really two major things that we can learn. One, the focus on driving new money into Washington County, and therefore using that as a lever of growth, is indeed moving the needle, and it is working. And this is one of our best data points that we have to really cross compare with others, to show that it isn't just anecdotal on the basis of company feedback and the quotes that you saw earlier, but the numbers are actually moving in the right direction. We also deploy various strategies that are designed to reinvest scarce taxpayer resources on those things that are gonna grow the tax base. That, too, is working, as we can see in the data. There are a few key drivers for what we anticipate, and the other key takeaway here is, these drivers are drivers that last. They don't move with ups and fits and starts in the economy. When you put these drivers in place, they're drivers that are going to hold the day for the longer term. And that's having very strong export-oriented companies at work here in West Bend, at work here in Jackson, and in Washington County as a whole, and that really is the case. We continue to see that our wages here, while there has been general nationwide, a lack of wage growth, the pressures have started to mount across the country, but we've remained competitive in that regard, and that's important, too, because obviously, that's key to attracting future opportunities. So that's the benchmark. We're benchmarking well, we are solidly positioned in places that matter, and we're driving new money into our area economy. What are we actually seeing on the ground? If you take a look at that, and economic development is typically measured in two areas, jobs and new investment. Every year, we set goals for jobs, we're just now calculating 2019 results, they weren't ready for tonight, but we've got you up through 2018. If we look at the last 10 years, not quite 10 years here, the line that you see right now are the goals that we set for driving economic growth. We had to recalibrate our goals, because this is what we actually were seeing in terms of growth. Now, what does this trend mean for you? Obviously, it's a scorecard for us, but for you, it's a trend that's suggesting that at one point in time, we had projects that each project was doing significant job creation. The job creation per project has gone down some, and has trended a little bit downward. Part of that is just because it's hard to find available labor, kind of that catch-22. You need to have available labor in order to create those jobs, but the other side of it is, we've seen productivity increases, efficiency increases, changes in the demographics, aging population here in Wisconsin, that's gonna continue to make it, so that the per-project job count is probably gonna stay on the more modest size. Right now, we're averaging anywhere between 15 to 60 jobs on the high side per project, whereas there were some historically projects that were as high as 80-plus jobs. So that is a trend that we see and envision are continuing. That is not necessarily translating into lower investment per project, that trend is going the other direction. Why does that matter for you? Future property tax revenue, right? So, once again, we had some pretty modest targets that we set, that we've had to recalibrate in 18, and here's why. Because we were not just consistently overperforming those targets, but we were seeing a trend that continued to show that acceleration of the overperformance. And we saw a little bit of modest activity here in 15, 16, no surprise, a little bit of a flattening on that, but it's taken off since, and it shows no signs of abating. And in fact, I've got a future slide here that shows why we think that it's not going to abate, at least in the next one to two, maybe even as much as three years. This gives you a sense of, these are our top projects by size and new investment, not jobs, but new investment, across Washington County, not just here in West Bend, and it gives you a sense of scale and scope and type of companies that are growing, and again, very locally-based existing businesses. You'll see large and small, but you'll also see that we are very heavy manufacturing-oriented, which in today's economy is actually a significant competitive advantage in terms of the workforce skillsets that we have, and that other companies are looking for, and that we can boast of. But you are seeing some new emerging companies, like Alchemy, which is a pharmaceutical company playing off of another pharmaceutical company here in West Bend, which does clinical trials, Spalding Clinicals. So we do have some emerging new markets that are presenting higher wage growth opportunities, which again, drives future residential opportunities and feeds those other indicators in terms of housing starts as we go forward. And if you're looking at the current development landscape, the overwhelming majority of our projects, again, are existing businesses that are growing. There's the old adage, if you can place lots of small bets and try to find a few winners, or if you've got the winners identified already, double down. We believe in the latter strategy. If they're located here, they've found success here, we need to double down on their opportunities to grow and deepen roots, and create wealth-sustaining jobs for Washington County, West Bend, and Jackson residents. Also, you'll see a trend in that manufacturing continues to lead. There are a few of these projects that are targeting the West Bend-Jackson area for potential opportunities, and I'm excited to say, a few of them are even significant redevelopment opportunities, which is some of the most difficult economic development to happen. And Adam is not here, but both Jackson and West Bend, and if you just look around in West Bend, it's sort of easy to, if you're from here, sort of take for granted what you've been seeing happening in terms of redevelopment. But as I said, it is tough to do, and many communities do not succeed at this in the way that West Bend and Jackson have been able to successfully focus on redevelopment initiatives and make that happen. And what's even more exciting about it is it's multifaceted. You're creating a sense of destinations, places, by having multifamily that's at various income levels and abilities, located in your downtown redevelopment areas, which drives the demand for services, and of course, the opportunity for us to attract other economic development and manufacturers into our area. So, something I wanted to point out, very hard to do, and West Bend and Jackson are doing it well and leading the day. This is a new tool that we look forward to bringing to you, because as you can see in your handouts, it's going to be able to present some very real live data, both in two camps. We're using it, this tool is an economic and fiscal impact analysis tool. We're running every project that we've done since 2010 that you saw on that trend line, through this tool to be able to essentially both, not just demonstrate, but put numbers to the impacts that those are having from a fiscal standpoint for our various taxing bodies, as well as our economic impacts to the families here in Washington County. This is not an example of a past use and demonstrating impact, but the other way that you use this tool is we can use it to forecast and project. We can also use it to help make decisions. Do we invest in this project? And by invest, I mean, do we put some incentives or scarce taxpayer resources to help encourage that development? And if we do, how much do we invest, and what's the payoff, and how quickly do we get a payoff? We look at it, we look at use of scarce taxpayer dollars, no different than any business decision. It needs to have a return on investment for the taxpayers, or you shouldn't make it. And this gives us a chance to be able to do that. This is a live project that is in West Bend as, right now, that we are evaluating the opportunity on. What you see are two, are several above- This is a live project that is in West Bend right now, that we are evaluating the opportunity on. What you see are two, are several above-the-line bars. That's the revenue. And then you see some below-the-line bars. Those are the investments that we're making on the public side. And then, of course, you've got a net that, over time, generates a net result. We are even able to take a look at, which in this particular case, the project has a very strong net positive impact and a fairly quick payback period as well. We're even able to look at it from just the West Bend School District standpoint. And this particular project has tens of thousands-dollar net positive impact to the school district. The wages here on this particular project are modest. They're not the higher-end wages that we would normally target on an average basis. And you see that in the housing starts that we expect coming from that project, which are really not any on that particular project. So, if we're going to invest, there has to be other reasons that we would invest in it. There are. I won't be disclosing those because it would give away some proprietary elements of this project when it's yet to be finalized in terms of negotiation. But needless to say, there is a net positive return for the school district, and it's in the footnotes way at the bottom in the small print. But what's kind of cool about this, too, is that we are evaluating it alongside of if tax increment financing is used, we can incorporate that in this model. And so, this net positive impact is exclusive, meaning it is including the tax increment financing and subtracting that out of the equation. So, once you put that tax increment financing back, meaning once that district is retired, your net positive impacts are exponentially larger than what you see there. So, very conservative look at that project opportunity. Earlier, I heard some questions presented of my colleagues here on rubbing the crystal ball, so we're going to give that a try for you all as well on what we're seeing forward and what you might be able to expect and need to plan for. One key trend that we're seeing is speed of business. Those communities that are able to respond, not, it used to be that it was a multi-year horizon. We had to develop out a project. Then we thought, oh, my gosh, we're needing to get these done in 365 days. That's really fast. Now, decisions are getting made in less than 90 days. I give you an example of Amazon. It's now been publicly announced it's, they're locating another facility in Beloit. It's not just warehousing and distribution. There's other value adds that you may or may not know Amazon does that are co-located with these facilities. Very technology-oriented company, very large facility. You can see there, we're looking at about a million square feet, tall ceilings, major acreage. There is almost no inventory statewide that can accommodate that in a 60-to-90-day shovel-in-the-ground horizon. So, any community that can put inventory online that's 100 acres under single ownership that is shovel-ready is on the radar screen of these types of projects by default because there is no inventory. So, it represents a competitive opportunity. And when you think of the inventory that's going online in that business park that Adam had mentioned, you're starting to get to that kind of scale. So, that does represent a great trend for our region. The other trend that we're seeing, which is a little bit befuddling for us in development because normally, we like to deal directly with the end user. You saw several end users on that top 10 list, or that top list of top projects. We were dealing directly with them on each and every one of those projects. Today, though, we're dealing more and more with developers. The end users are not choosing to own their properties. They're choosing to lease properties. They don't see the value necessarily in owning them, but they're letting the developers who have expertise in managing real estate take that on, and they're just creating operating leases for them. Again, it allows them to be a little bit more nimble, respond in markets, which means that when we're dealing in the development community now, we're needing to work with developers and craft our deal structures so that there's multiple win-wins happening for developers, for the end users, for the community, and, most importantly, for taxpayers. It's hard to say this in Wisconsin when you've got Foxconn sitting to the south, which had and continues to represent positive promise, albeit at a different scale. It's hard when it's epic, mind-blowing scale to go down to epic, maybe not quite as mind-blowing scale, but still epic. We're still, we're seeing that trend, however, continue to permeate the market, not just through a Foxconn, but through just the way economic development is happening. Again, you've seen it in Amazon. The reason for this is in order to compete economically, you're competing globally. In order to compete globally, you need scale. That's why Briggs needed to move as quick as they did on creating a North American distribution center right here in Washington County. They just need to have that scale in order to be successful. If we can't respond to these very large projects, which, by the way, don't necessarily employ epic numbers of people because, again, of efficiencies, productivities, and technology, we need to be able to duplicate these large projects in order to ensure that our success is happening long-term. We're also seeing the rise of mega-manufacturing, where manufacturing, too, is happening at large scales, again, to drive economies of scale. This is perhaps the most exciting crystal ball trend that I don't see changing in the near term, and one that we can count on, and one that Washington County, Jackson, and West Bend are going to be able to leverage significantly. And that's what I alluded to earlier. Where's the inventory? If you're going to build a new project, you have to have a place to put it. You have to have the workforce to handle it, and they have to be competitively priced all the way around. And that's not happening in our southeast Wisconsin market. It's superheated in the Kenosha/Ricine area. Prices are not sustainable. Wage rates are not sustainable, highly competitive. So, if you're going to grow your business and you still want to be located in southeast Wisconsin, where are you going to look? And right now, you kind of start at the zoo interchange and spread your way out. Well, you can't go too far east before you hit a lake, so when you're doing concentric circles on workforce, that's a bit of a problem. You go west, you don't have a whole lot of inventory to speak of till you get outside the range of a good available workforce. We talked about the south. Where are you going to look? So, we're very well-positioned to be able to take advantage of these trends here in Washington County, and in fact, our pipeline reflects that. So, wanted to give you a different slice. Happy to address any questions or speak to anything more specific that we're seeing. This is more, again, of that leading indicator and where we see it going, and we're well-positioned.
Christian, thank you for great content. Lots for us to digest in there. I guess, a question I have, and a lot of points to this in the sense that a lot of your growth represented here, our companies, like you said, they're doubling down. They're here already, so it's expansion. But you're also talking to players that are outside looking and coming in, and you have a constituency that is bigger than the West Bend School District. You've got all of Washington County.
Right.
In those situations where you get beyond the initial sales pitch with somebody coming in from the outside, have you had conversations about West Bend versus Hartford? And specifically, how does the West Bend School District, or the schools in general, does that come up in conversation? And maybe, what is the perception from that outside community?
So, you asked a few different questions there. I'll pull them apart and getting you an answer. Very rarely, interestingly enough, this is counterintuitive, but very rarely do we find a project where there are two sites or multiple sites in Washington County and different communities competing head-to-head. Today, because of the proliferation of data and availability of data, by the time that we're having conversations with them, they've done their analytics and they've honed in on one or two sites in an entire region, much less within the county border. So, it's very rare that we're doing kind of a head-to-head comparison. When we do, here, I should say, when you do talk to companies and you look at what's most important, it kind of works in a funnel basis. At the top of the funnel are key factors for their project that are going to pull people out, no matter what a great community or school district you have. I alluded to some of those and those trends. Things that if we don't influence at the top of the funnel, like availability of land that's lots of acreage under single ownership, we don't have that. We're not getting a look. It doesn't matter what kind of school district you have. Once you qualify for the basic project and you get to the bottom of the funnel, now everybody starts to look the same on the data points, and school district, school quality is everything. Everybody boasts of having a wonderful community. I haven't, I've yet to have a development sales pitch where our community isn't a great place to live. They all are. Everybody lives in their favorite community that they live in. No, they wouldn't be living there. But things like the quality of the school district, the data that comes out of the school district are hugely influential in making decisions on the part of where spouses want to locate. I can't tell you how many projects we've worked on where the CEO, where she is touring the county, driving a decision, and she brings her husband in, and her husband looks at a school, or looks at a school district or a neighborhood and goes, "I'm not so sure." And next thing you know, they're looking at another location. When it gets down to it's you and two other locations, it gets that subjective, for lack of a better way to put it. And West Bend School District, the data shows well. You've got some good outcome data in terms of just the analytics on how well students and graduates here are performing. You also get a lot of bang for your buck, which is a double-edged sword, as I'm sure you know as board members here as well, which is important. But now, when you need to invest, it makes it all the more difficult to be able to do that, and that's kind of at the turning point that you're in.
Thank you. One more question? Christian, thank you very much. That was great.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate the information.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks for being here.
You bet.
Superintendent, what do you want to do next?
If we were to go right into our elementary reports, they're next on the list and in the salary framework, and both of those will go relatively quickly. And then, Dave has a few minutes. He's going to talk about not the facilities plan, but the process of the plan, and then we will get into those questions that I sent out to you regarding facilities planning. Great.
Good evening. Last month, we talked about Silverbrook, and Lance Ral was here with Heather Gelnick to talk about their school. And so, tonight, we have the elementary principals. I'm excited to just introduce them tonight, but also tell you that as a cabinet team, we are just really so proud to work alongside them. We like to work with them, but also, we've gotten to know them personally and just what great people they are. I have some interesting things to share about each of them. Andy Kasek from McLean, who's been taped to a wall and has been dressed up as an ice cream sundae. It's been very fun. Adrian Schneider, if you don't see her in the principal office or around the halls at a concert, you may see her playing the piano and accompanying a concert. So, that's one of her nice talents. Jen Potter's been busy making candles this year for her staff at Green Tree. She's one of the newer principals on the team, and she's shared that love of making candles with others that she works with. Darcy, you may have known, she has an art background, and prior to being in education, she worked on murals for private and residential companies. Tristan has a nice, fun little background where he and his wife actually both grew up on a dairy farm. So, here they are. Here, they are as a team together. Like I said, they're fun to work with. I respect them all tremendously, and I'm just happy to work alongside with them. They're going to share a little bit about what they're doing as a team together to move our system forward at the elementary level.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Excellent. No, just a little follow-up. We were here about a year ago, talked about our Data into Action Model, which is a continuous improvement piece that was introduced by Jen Gennerman a couple of years ago. And it's one of those things that we continue to work on as continuous improvement. We've heard great presentations about our communities, Jackson, West Bend, and the analytics that go into that. Our teachers are doing the same exact thing. We are looking at student data today, looking at our professional learning communities, and we're actually delving into a new literacy program, the comprehensive literacy program, which fits right into our Data into Action Model. So, instead of working harder, working a lot smarter, being able to get that information into the teacher's hands, into the parent's hands, goal set with our children, so they're taking more ownership for their learning. All right? Darcy?
All right. As a district, over the last couple of years, we've really had more of an intentional focus of aligning our school improvement plans with the district plan. And just to give a quick little overview of each of the little triangle, or the segments within the triangle up there, and how our sites connect with the district plan. For instance, with our student learning, really, the focus this year is a balanced literacy approach. So, at our Skype, at our school sites, we're really helping support our teachers with them being able to access our very talented instructional coaches, literacy specialists, and their own colleagues to help them with implementation of that framework. And then, with our customer, with our engagement and customer satisfaction area, the district really has a, they survey all staff in the spring, and so, and then create action plans for the next year. And really, our sites like to take a proactive approach and get a little dipstick from our staff as we go along throughout the year, whether it's in culture rounding or doing surveys, just to get an understanding of where we're at as principals of the building, if staff are feeling that our communication is efficient, or if they're feeling informed, and so, we can make adjustments along the way. And then, with our safe and secure goals of implementing school emergency plans within the district and enhancing our aspects of feeling physically and emotionally safe within the schools, we've collaborated with our community to create each of our site plans. And then, also, our elementary sites have specific social-emotional goals for our students, and they may look different from site to site. It could be something where students, where we're creating mentoring opportunities with our students and adults in the building. Positive behavior interventions, that's actually occurring at all of our elementary schools. And also, just developing more of a trauma-sensitive lens as we work with our students across the board. And then, with effective and efficient, one of our district actions is really for staff to partake in free data summits throughout the year, which our elementary staff did today. And the focus is really on implementation of common data process. And Andy made mention to it to our Data into Action Model. So, it really gives, at the sites, we're giving our staff some of the data to access, and what we give them is the gift of time, time to actually collaborate and work with their grade-level teams to really process through not only the data in the system, but also perceptual data, social-emotional data of the child, to really make those solid action steps going forward for our next cycle. So, that's kind of an overview of how our school improvement plans connect with our district improvement plans. And I'll hand it over to Adrian, who's going to speak about engagement and satisfaction.
Good evening. So, last spring, the district surveyed our staff, and as an elementary cohort, these are the results from our spring survey from our staff. While we are very pleased with the numbers that we see in front of us, we also knew that there were areas, excuse me, that we could improve on. And so, one of the ways that we have done that is through our culture rounding, which each of our sites does. If you're not aware, so, culture rounding occurs two to three times a year with every single staff member that is in our building. That's including kitchen staff, custodial staff, traveling staff, teachers, support staff. If there's a staff member working in our building at any point during the year, they participate in a culture rounding. It is voluntary on the staff member's end of things, but it is something that we like to see, to have a cross-section of our staff members, so that when we get the results, we have an understanding of areas that we might be able to make some improvements. So, again, we are very pleased with our results from the spring. We will be doing a dipstick, if we haven't already, in our sites to kind of see where we're at. One of the things that we do during our culture rounding is find out from them, specifically, are there any topics this year that they have not felt as informed about? Whether that be through our district newsletter that goes out every two weeks, if it's a staff newsletter that goes out every week, other types of communication. We want to make sure that we're getting a picture of what maybe is missing so that we can try to include that going forward or get a better idea of what that looks like for our staff. Staff culture is incredibly important. We want our staff to enjoy coming to work, enjoy the colleagues that they work with. And so, there are several ways that we do that at each of our sites. It could, you know, be things such as, I mean, if you come to Decor on Wednesdays, you get to eat junk food and salads on Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month, though. But that's just the way that staff come together, try to set aside that time during the day to be with one another, catch up on our lives, and just get to know each other a little bit better. But another, some other things that we do include just after-school gatherings, or even, we spoke to the data summit components. Decor's data summit looks a little bit different this week. We actually participated in our bookroom project today, which was a massive undertaking, and it was just a great day for staff to learn more about each other through the work with our bookroom and seeing what access, what available resources we have for our students to access. what access, what available resources we have for our students to access. And then the other thing is, I mentioned, we all do a weekly newsletter of some sort, whether that be through a blog, or it be through another type of communication. And we try, we ask staff to give shout-outs to one another. We want to make sure, and that's also part of our, our culture rounding, is to say, who would you like recognized and for what? And each of us are doing something to rec, to recognize that individual for their contribution to our site, which is always a wonderful thing to receive that feedback from your colleague. I believe next is Ms. Potter. She's going to speak to student culture.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Good.
So, going into the importance of the staff culture is also student culture. So, we've been collecting data. We've used student surveys, used our in-house data to really identify how to help students feel more safe and secure at school. So they've really helped us move forward with something that I believe Darcy was talking about, which is pushing forth and refining our school-wide social emotional skills and training for students, as well as our PBIS strategies that we use in-house. Staff members are intentionally working with students on developing skills for learning, skills for problem solving, skills for making friends, practices to teach empathy, and strategies for emotional management, just to name a few. Some of the results have prompted us to provide extending circumstances or opportunities for students to practice these skills both in and out of the classroom. So just as somebody before me had said, I believe it was Darcy also, that connecting our students to role models in the community, to connecting them to older students, connecting them to play activities, really trying to promote that positive school culture and giving them ideas and places in which to practice these skills beyond the classroom. And we also are working very hard this year to celebrate the positive school climate that we're creating, making sure that when students are meeting goals, whether it's social emotional goals, or it's data goals, or it's behavioral goals, whatever it might be, academic goals, that we're celebrating them and rewarding them for those hard-earned efforts.
That's me. All right. Hello, board. Thanks for the time to present with you this evening. I have two slides for you this evening. The first one speaks directly to our stakeholders. These are our families. The first slide that I have, the first bullet point, rather, is our family engagement nights. We know that our direct impact is to our families, and the more that we can be engaged with them and leveled with them is a boon, and it's a direct impact on our school and our students. We've had a spaghetti supper at Fair Park, where our staff got together and we made spaghetti and meatballs. We did math and reading games with families that came visit, and it was a good emphasis to push back about coming and celebrating together. These nights are connective. They're part of our mission to be able to connective, but also be responsive to the needs of our family, to break down the walls. And a lot of great work that goes on with the communication with our families and connecting with them in a way that's more than reporting grades and assigning homework. A couple of the other things that we do is we look to build on those partnerships with our family engagement nights and partnering with local community organizations and resources. Inside of our schools, we have a lot of awesome organizations that work behind the scenes to provide support to families that are in need. Some examples of this are, we send home backpacks of food, and we are contacted with local food banks, and really getting our students and our families the resources they need to be as successful as they can be when they're in our classrooms. And this flows naturally into my last slide about our whole student approach. The West Bend School District has committed a tremendous amount of time and effort and energy to teaching and reaching the whole child. Our teachers work very hard to make these connections on a very personal and relatable level. A lot of the work that we do inside of our data action cycles and all of the other pieces that we see are to create an environment where there can be success, intentional, purposeful success, and that really stems from the whole child. Our teachers receive a lot of training about meeting the needs of our students academically, socially, and mentally and emotionally. And this is no easy task, and it doesn't happen accidentally. It is very intentional, and from the work of a lot of really great people planning here from our ESC building and filtering down to all of our buildings. Thank you for your time.
I have one question. Having been in many of the elementary schools and seen you all in action and the wonderful teachers we have there, could you highlight one, either activity that's, that in the last year, either this school year or last year, that each one of your schools participates in that you'd like to highlight, either teacher-wise or program-wise? Because I just appreciate all the creativity and programs you do to teach our young, I call them squirrels, in the community.
I'll go first. I'm standing right here. We just recently had a family fitness night, and it was really about not just physical fitness, it was about emotional fitness, it was about mental fitness, it was really about bringing together families to work together, be collaborative. It was a pretty good night. I have a teacher here who was a great success there, too. So we do a lot of things that try to engage the families in building, kind of make and take things, and really coming into our school and having a great time with us.
I want to highlight, we have a fantastic community service team that's really been kicking it into high gear. I mean, last year, last couple of years, and this year is particularly. In the last month, they've had so many community outreach, outreach programs, and there isn't necessarily a pantry in Jackson, so the school itself is becoming that access for our families. And just building that community connection, having people donate to it, being able to go out to Pigglely Wiggly and go shopping, spend a thousand dollars of someone else's money, that goes directly to our families and our students, is pretty awesome and fantastic. And we just have hard-working staff that are dedicated to that, and that's outside of their workday. So.
This year, for the first time, Decor took an all-school field trip. We went to Camp Minna County in October. I didn't sleep for the six weeks prior to it, thinking about all the logistics that would go into it, but I had an incredible team around me that was helping just plan for that day. The weather could not have been better. The kids were, they had a wonderful time. If you come through our, our building, we have two bulletin boards full of actual pictures hanging up that the kids still, four, three months later, are going by, and "I remember when we did this, and when we did this." It was an amazing connecting community opportunity for all of our students and our staff. Our entire staff was there for the full day, and it was just a wonderful experience.
So, next month, McLean is going to be hosting a reading/writing night. We kind of rotate our curricular areas. We've had math nights, we have Night of Stars, we have all of those great things that occur. The best thing is that it's not led by the administrator, it's led by the teachers, led by our parent group, and most importantly, the kids. And so, it's that open door, come and enjoy, but see what the kids are doing on an everyday basis.
I'd love to talk about all of our family nights, and that was what my slide was on, but I, I wanted to go back to just the more nuanced piece of, a part of our PBIS system, the positive behavioral intervention systems, is about recognizing positive behaviors. And inside the classrooms, our teachers celebrate these behaviors on an ongoing and continuous basis. And it's this kind of continual effort and process towards recognizing and moving forward and, and helping behaviors in a positive way that really would highlight what, what I think is the special. We do the great family nights, we go on retreats, and the big things are great, but those pass. And it's the continuation and the follow-through, really, that highlights the great work in our elementary schools.
I don't need to hear from all of you, but could one of you tell me how the new Raptor system is working in the building? And are, are your normal parent visitors, were they aware of it? Are they okay with it?
Yeah, actually, it's going really, really well. We did, I think as a district, did a very nice job of prepping our families for the transition, and the administrative assistants received great training from the ESC technology staff, and we have positive, I've had nothing but positive feedback from the families that have come in, the visitors, the retired, you know, people who aren't a family member of our building, have come in, and it's, it's been great. And actually, from my perspective, I no longer have to ask people, you don't just hold the name tag, you actually have to put it around your neck. Now I don't have to worry about that because it's a sticker. So, that's been really helpful. But I think, I, I hope my colleagues can say the same thing, but it has been, it has gone very, very well for a transition.
Just a real quick comment. Very fortunate to work in a district with such great schools. And our elementary schools are some of the finest. And so, for board members, as well as the visiting public or our listening public, if you haven't had an opportunity to visit one of our schools lately, certainly encourage you to do so. Maybe best to give us a call in advance so that they can prepare. But, but if you haven't been to one of our elementaries, our middle school, our intermediate school, our high schools, one of our 4K programs, we just have outstanding schools in our district, and certainly would like our listening public to come and observe and see what's going on, but give them a call in advance. Thank you.
And if I may, with, with 4K, 5K enrollment happening in the next couple of weeks here, all of us are welcome and open to tours. We know that sometimes it's, especially if it's your first child coming into elementary school, it can be pretty daunting. So, there again, just set up an appointment with the administrative assistant, and all of us are more than happy to spend that half an hour, hour to tour the building and answer questions that prospective families might have.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Lenny Hansen, I think you're up.
So thanks for letting me come up and present to you today. I especially want to also thank, we have a lot of our teachers in the audience today, I'm sure are very interested in, in where our teacher comp, compensation model discussion is going, and I really appreciate their involvement. In fact, as I look around, I see a lot of people who were involved on our compensation committees. I see people on our superintendent advisory council who have provided their thoughts as well. You know, this is a, they, our teachers deserve a compensation framework and to know where this is going. We, this is a process that's been in motion for some time now through different administrative changes and things like that. And I know I've had conversations with some of them where I've said, where they said, you know, we want to, we keep getting hearing that this is coming, this is coming. And I said, all I can give you is my word that this is coming to the finish line, and I feel that it's, we're about to cross that finish line here. So, I provided a kind of extensive executive summary that we'll put on the public end, too, that tried to give you a lot of background, because I know that with, how our timeframes are tonight, I don't want to take too much time, and I don't want to leave time for, really, for questions and things like that. You know, key reasons that we are looking to replace the compensation framework, there's a number of them laid out with our current scorecard or points-based type system that I put in that document. You know, the other big picture pieces, as you have already heard over past meetings, our framework is too complicated to really be well-understood, as well as to be a motivating factor. Doesn't, it's, it has a tendency to appear more punitive rather than rewarding exceptional expertise. The transparency around it has been questioned in, at times in past years. And some of the other details, very complicated, I think, 24-page document that became the framework, very difficult to really understand, what are we getting at? What is our goal? What is our focus with this? In the feedback that we received from multiple compensation committees, which we have multiple representatives here tonight with us, other staff groups, other staff individually, superintendent advisory council members, really, there's a balance that's wanted. There's wanted to be valuing longevity, continuous, strong, high-quality service to the district, while also valuing expertise and giving teachers an opportunity to be actively engaged in a positive way in the framework, to accelerate their pay if they so choose to do so. So, what we're looking at is, we reviewed kind of all the different types of models that are out there, is a model that really focuses on those two key areas, longevity, and then added expertise, and how can we compensate for each. So, as part of this model, it starts with that foundation of the board having that opportunity each year that it budgets to say, okay, how, what, what kind of compensation increase are we able to give teachers? How are we performing in the marketplace? How do we remain competitive? We've been in a decent spot in terms of retention. Our retention rates the last couple of years for teaching staff have been right in the 6% to 7% range as far as turnover. So, we're retaining our staff, but we need to remain competitive in the marketplace, and that's where those year-to-year increases play an important role, for sure. On top of that, we want to be able to have the opportunity to recognize great expertise. There's been a lot of discussion about the different ways you can show expertise in the field of education. So there's some of your more traditional paths that you might think of, such as a master's degree in your content area, additional licensures in really critical areas that really enhance that, that teaching practice. Then there's also other areas that are maybe less traditional, that we want to open the doors for that as well, because we think they provide value. So, one of the items that was discussed in the spring, when the previous HR director came to the board, and there were a number of members of that compensation committee here at that time as well, were maybe someone that's not, you know, there 's a lot of staff that maybe they don't want to go back and get an entire additional master's degree, but there are expertise areas they'd love to grow in and put that expertise into action. And that's where a discussion led to things such as micro endorsements, micro credentials, things like that. We'd like for that to be able to be a part of the compensation plan. As we've done some, some investigating, you know, it's also become very apparent that we have to be very protective of the dollars that the district has. So we really need to do our homework in researching what, what sort of alternative, maybe non-traditional options are available. We've seen a number of micro-credential, micro-endorsement vendors that have options out there that, that we do not believe are of high quality and going to make an impact both in the learning of the educator or in the learning of the student. We have seen some that we feel we would be able to say, yes, this is really going to make an impact on learning and, and be worthy of our, our citizens' dollars going towards that. As we've done that investigation, what I've also found is that, as there's been a number of micro-credential companies that maybe aren't as strong as we had hoped, there are some university connections that are out there that we are working on. So, universities, that I spoke with another one just last week, that are putting together kind of customized solutions for districts looking for these kind of, hey, listen, can we put three courses together that are impactful around trauma-sensitive education, or around this particular literacy element? We're seeing a lot of hope with that kind of partnership, where, listen, it's a different, all of our teachers are in different seasons of their life. They might not be in a point where they're saying, "I want to invest in a 36 credit, or a master's degree, but boy, I'd love to increase my expertise in this area and for a few, you know, micro-credentials or micro-courses offered through a really qualified venue like a university," can obtain that expertise, put it into action, and be compensated additionally for that expertise. So we're really, I'm very positive about the direction that we are taking this, in that there's lots of options for our staff. Our staff are not here at seven o'clock at night just for their own fun. They want to have options that engage them in their compensation. They want to have options for whatever part of a period of their career they may be in. And that's really what we're trying to provide, while at the same time ensuring that all of the options for compensation increases are high-quality, good use of our taxpayer dollars, that we're, we're not just pulling every possible course or micro-credential or off-the-shelf that do that, and you get additional money. It's really got to be meaningful. And we heard that at our compensation committees as well, and I see a lot of head nods. We don't want to go rogue and come up with something that really isn't going to make an impact in the expertise of the great teachers we already have, and especially in the lives of our students. So, I'll take some questions. I do have some other documents I'll quick-pass around that we'll put on public access as well, just to give you an idea of how we're kind of shaking out the organization of our compensation model framework design and that sort of thing. The first document I'll pass around to you is really just kind of a layout, maybe a table of contents, per se, of all the sections of the compensation model that I've been kind of pulling together, so that we make sure we cover all the elements that are important to our staff, to the board, to the community. And I'll, I'll pass that around. We also recognize from our previous experience that there's certain things that we need to review annually as, as a school district, as a school board. So in our previous framework, there was a lot really laid out back in 2014 in terms of dollar amounts for things, you know, salary scales, things like that. And when they were in that, all in that comprehensive compensation document, well, that made it more challenging to update things. For example, if we want to update our starting teacher salary, which has remained static since that initial implementation of that compensation model, that's in the comp model. We'd really like to have a process in place through in place through the comp model where annually you have the opportunity as a board to review all of those kind of marketplace competitiveness type decisions. So I'll send this around and then field questions that you have right now.
Lenny, when you send it around, what, what's your timeline? When do you want to come back to the board saying, you know what, we've got some more input from our teachers? We have more input from the administrators, the cabinet, and we think this is what we have. What's your timeline for that?
My hope is to collect any additional feedback in the next few weeks to a month so that we can bring this to the school board at the March board meeting, which is that March 9th?
March 9th.
March 9th, so that we can go into a new year with this finally set for our teachers, that they know where this is going, they know what options they have, they, and that they, we can begin to also inform our staff about this before the year is out so that we can help them become engaged and become, hopefully create some sense of engagement, empowerment, opportunity from, from this model. We know that coming up with a compensation model that is going to work for 456 teachers, which we have right now, is a little bit like watching sausage get made, right? Like, and there's a lot of opinions and a lot of thoughts about what we want, what we think is best, and their passion and they're well-reasoned. We have to pull those together into one cohesive framework that's going to work.
Just one other comment, and that is, once the plan is in place, obviously administrators come and go, board members change, we truly want to make sure that the plan provides stability so that maybe it's not going to be the plan forever. But if you're two years into your masters or your five credit, three credits into your five-credit micro-credential, whether it's a college credential or whatever it is, that we don't ever pull the plug out so that say, you know what, I'm sorry, you didn't have a time, done in time, you don't get a chance to take advantage of the opportunities you've been working for. And so maybe it's not indefinite, maybe it's like a master's, you have five years, you have 10 years or whatever, whatever. But we want to make sure that as leadership changes, as board members change, that we don't pull the plug out from the people who are working to get to that spot.
So as part of that, we would have a pre-approval process basically. So that would be us saying, yes, you're, you're talking about a program, a course, a micro-credential, micro-endorsement that we are going to compensate for once completed. That also helps us with budgeting, helps us kind of get an understanding of how much future increases are, how many are kind of sitting out there in the, in the queue waiting to be completed and picked up. So we see a mutual benefit there. The employee gets a promise that we will honor this if you begin down this path, and we get the, the help of being able to budget forecast a little bit better that way.
Any questions?
I'll just make a comment. I'd love what you said, that it needs to be reviewed annually because as it relates to the budget, we can't have our entire staff go out and get a micro-credential one year and afford to pay it. You know, so reviewing it annually, making sure it's sustainable is the word I've used for the past three years as it relates to our comp plan. It has to be sustainable. Of course, we want to attract and retain and reward good teachers. I don't want to reward bad teachers. I'd rather see them leave the district than get a paycheck from us. But I, in general, think we have wonderful teachers here, so, but it's got to be sustainable. So.
I think sustainable but also achievable for staff, you know, is a critical piece for me. I mean, there's something to be said for, hey, you know, you can get this 15% salary increase, which is a giant number, I understand, everyone, calm down. But really, no one's ever going to get it because you can't achieve it. So, I mean, I want to make sure that what we're presenting to our staff and even our administrators is achievable in some, you know, perspective. And I agree with Joel about the budget, that obviously we have to have the dollars to pay for it, but it's really self-defeating to, you know, say, hey, you're doing a great job, but guess what? You just didn't quite hit the mark to, you know, get this 1% increase.
So when I look around our room, I mean, we have, like I said, teachers at all strands of experience, at what point in their career they are. And I empathize with the key desire to make sure that every single one of them has the opportunity to expand their, their expertise and have that work in their favor by a compensation. One of the concerns with the previous framework was that some of the things that you could take advantage of were more limited to certain types of, you know, maybe classroom teachers here or, you know, and then some of our other, you know, many, many individuals who aren't your traditional classroom teacher fall under the guise of the frameworks, such as counselors, psychologists, speech therapists, you know, all those sorts of things. I'm very, very passionate about making sure that every single person, every one of those 456 individuals has the opportunity to engage with this framework. And then to speaking about the sustainability, I mean, you will find a few districts out there still that, that have that kind of traditional grid-style, you know, step-in lane. But the concern is exactly what you're saying. And they, some of them have abandoned them when trying to stick with them because, you know, funding mechanisms did not keep up with what was necessary to maintain those. And really, I can't think of anything worse than, than what you said, to be able to say, hey, we're going to promise you this, and then we find out we don't have the money. And, I mean, that's, that's an unacceptable message to have to give people.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Dave Ross, you're up next.
Dave, as you go forward, we certainly don't want to short-change your 25-year plan, but also know that many of the questions that will be in the 25-year plan are also part of those questions that were sent out to the board earlier on the part. And so we'll kind of keep it all together.
Okay, I'll talk really fast.
Okay.
We're going to talk a little bit about the 25-year plan. And I'm going to, I'm going to have to bring in a couple of other things that we've been doing as a department because in facilities, everything rests on each other. So we have had a 25-year plan in place since 2012. It was brought up and we really started to move through it. Over the last several years, for one reason or another, we've actually kind of slipped back a little bit and we've been really dealing with a 25-year capital expenditure, expenditure plan. So one of the things that we've always tried to take into account as a department is that you can't manage what you don't know you have. So we have been spending a lot of time over the last several years of going through our facilities and understanding exactly what is out there, what needs to be managed, what needs to be fixed, what needs to be replaced. So out of the facilities planning process, we really look for three key outputs. We'd like to see a master plan at the end of the day. And a master plan kind of deals with site-specific physical plans for buildings, the aesthetics of the buildings, and construction and engineering estimates. Like to see a strategic facility plan that raises, really goes out two to five years. And I think this is where we're kind of heading as a, as a group in a district right now. Really analyzing the existing conditions, what our organizational needs are, and recommendations for new spaces and buildings. And the master plan and the strategic plan, they both try to answer the question of what buildings and space are needed to support our strategic goals. And then there's the tactical. And that's really what we've been doing. We've been doing that annual expenditure for the last couple of years. You know, it's been very difficult to really understand where we're going and how we're going to get there. I'm often asked what I would do differently if I got to redo the 25-year facilities plan. Well, I get to do the, redo the 25-year facilities plan. So the original plan really did not make many allowances for inflation. So we, if, with every spreadsheet that we've done, we've added an inflation factor into it. We really focused on a lot of maintenance issues and not issues that, you know, teachers get really excited about, you know, VAV boxes and plumbing and all the rest of that stuff, really doesn't do it for them. We're a little bit limited in scope and detail. And probably the biggest problem that we've had is that we just didn't revisit it often enough. But at least it was a plan and we were moving in a direction rather than being random and haphazard. So one of the first things that we went out and did was, we actually have electronic drawings of every floor and every building that we have in the district. That was a massive undertaking in and of itself because we have 1.2 million square feet of building space. And what that allowed us to do was establish categories and types and uses for all our space, which in turn allowed us to establish cleaning standards against room categories to ensure that we had proper staffing levels. And based upon the, a desired level of cleanliness, we were able to actually place those pieces of equipment that we went out and found on a floor plan. So the next step was we needed to get our on-demand work system up and running because we needed to keep our customers happy. So this is just a basic shot of what we're looking for, where the problem is, tell us what it is, and we'll come and fix it. This is a shot of our data and how much we have of the pieces of equipment. And it doesn't look like a whole heck of a lot. It, a lot of numbers. But basically, we've gone out, we have collected all that equipment that needs to be serviced on a regular basis. Every day we go out and we see something else that we've missed. Currently, we're up to 5,387 pieces of equipment that we service on a regular basis. So we, to get to that preventative maintenance piece, which actually leads into the facilities plan, we needed to define what we wanted to do on a regular basis, establish time standards associated with it to make sure that we were staffed appropriately to get done what needed to be done, define how often it needed to be done, establish the expected service life, which again gets into the facilities planning piece of it, establish baseline replacement costs. And to get that information, we use different sources. We use equipment manuals. Because one of the big construction document places is RS Means, and they provide a lot of construction data. We use the GSA PM guidelines, and we also use ASHRAE guidelines. Currently, for this fiscal year, we have archived six, just about 6,800 work orders, and we're at a ratio of about 60 to 40 PM to on-demand type work orders. Ideally, I'd like to be at about 80/20. This is how we developed our replacement cycles for that equipment. It's, it's very difficult to see, but just so you know, it's, goes out 25 years. There's initial, an initial replacement cost. So this is for rooftop units within the district. We have about 50 rooftop units. They actually range in value from about $11,000 to $69,000, $70,000. Again, because we haven't really done that strategic plan yet, we've had to account for every piece of equipment that we have in the district. So you'll see a big block down there of orange and red. That's Jackson. Orange means that that particular piece of equipment has exceeded its expected life cycle by less than five years. Red means that it is over five years. So we put all the numbers in, come out with, you know, the costs. This particular piece of equipment, we used a 4% inflation factor. And ASHRAE says that that piece of equipment is going to last about 15 years. We've kind of stretched it out to 17. The bad part about that, when you add a 4% inflation factor, is that $11,000 unit that you replaced today in its, when it's reached its life cycle, has now just about doubled in cost. So this is our capital expenditure plan for this year. You saw it at the last board meeting, and you'll see it again at the next one. So we have some roof replacement projects, all things that have been examined, that have reached the end of their expected life cycle and need to go on. One of the things that is in this plan for this year is really the library remodel up at the high school. That's something, again, like I said, we haven't done much of to, we really stuck to the maintenance items and not done really much to improve the educational environment going forward. So in the next couple of months, building principals will be able to request projects. There's a form within our facilities management software that we will make available to everybody, and they can request a project. Project must have a value of at least $5,000. They'll have to really understand what, what they're asking for, so the scope will need to be defined. And to find what some benefits are of completing the project, but that will be available to all district administrators. So that's kind of where we're going really this year, kind of get through with more of an equipment-type replacement project, or projects, and then really start to build on that strategic discussion, which you guys are going to start on next. So does anyone have any questions?
The project request form that you just showed, that's not for, hey, I've got a leaky toilet that needs to be replaced.
No, that was the first form. That's, if you've got a leaky toilet and it's leaking, give us a phone call.
Yep.
If it's, you can wait for it for a day or two, run it through the system. Because what we're doing is also building a maintenance history on each piece of equipment. So every time a PM is done on it, every time it breaks and we get called to fix it, we develop that history so we can better look at that particular piece of equipment and decide whether it needs to be replaced, or we can stretch it out for a year or two more.
The project request form is more like if one of these elementary school principals felt like they needed a remodel of a bathroom, not just a toilet replaced, but a remodel of a bathroom.
Remodel of a bathroom, redo the library, those kind of bigger projects, value of more than $5,000. It's going to be an interesting process as we move forward. You know, when you start looking at the size of our district, if you were to say that we expect to be on a painting schedule of every 10 years, it's going to cost $128,000 to paint enough in one year so that we stay on that 10-year cycle. So the numbers get really big, really fast.
But if they don't, in 10 years, it's going to come home and it's going to be really big.
Yes.
Same, same as with the roof.
Yep. Yep.
You know, one of the things that Dave and I talked about is we increase the budget going forward. Our recommendation is to increase it by $500,000 for the capital budget. So we know that a lion's share of that's going to be the high school library because it needs to happen. Okay? What we would like to see going forward, and we can spend an additional $500,000 on, on roofs every year, or on, on the things that, that truly you have to have, I'm hoping that we can take a look and as we develop our, our strategic plan, that that $500,000 is identified to do some things above and beyond just replacing the roof. Okay? Because that needs to happen too. But, but, you know, there, there are some rooms at the high school that truly, in, in every school, not, but I was, I was at the high school on Friday, and we've got some rooms that, you know, that maybe hasn't been painted in a long, long time. And they just look like they're not the kind of educational environment that we want. And we can't, we can't do them all. But maybe we take 30 rooms a year and we, we go forward, and that's going to absorb $100,000 of that 500,000. But if you don't, you're going to end up with everything all at one time. And unfortunately, the money for our capital budget is you rob Peter to pay Paul. Okay? That, that it all comes out of front end. Okay? There's not, and we've talked about that before. We're a low-spending district and we're proud of that. I think Christian said it, it's a double-edged sword. Okay? People like the fact that we're low-spending. At the same time, we're about $500 below the state average. No, $700, $800 below the state average. If, if you've got 6,000 kids and we're $800 below the state average, we're about $5 million below the state average in the amount of money we spend on our facilities and everything else. You take that for the last 30 years, that's $150 million. Okay? And that's a significant chunk of change so that we don't end up in a situation where we're at today. Well, we're not going backwards, and that's the formula, and we live with that. But, but it does prevent some difficult scenarios because we have to do things because we need facilities that are 21st century, and it's already 2020. So it's, we're, we're talking halfway through the 21st century or a quarter of the way through the 21st century, and we haven't done much as of late. And that's going to be the real challenge for Dave and the real challenge for the board, as to how do we, how do we get to the point where we're back on track?
I just want to say, for those of you who haven't seen it or are new in the public, Dave Ross created a couple hundred to open the book on, Dave was an open book to the board, to anybody that asked, to the private task force on just providing the current status of our facilities. The board toured every- The board toured every facility about four or five months ago, and here's the book on all our facilities and what improvements need to be made. I thank you just for being an open book. I know we have some tough decisions to be made, but all the information is being provided to the board, the people involved with facilities, and the community to be involved with this decision. So I just want to say the detail, and anybody that wants more detail, you know.
Give me a call.
Give me a call.
So that really leads us into the questions that I provided, and I believe they're online, and we'll make sure and have them available online as well. But as we look at that 25-year plan, both from a facilities, but also the strategic point, we really need to decide how we want to focus. And I think one of the big questions that we really need to address is Jackson. What are the wishes of the board as far as a facility in Jackson? I'm not saying it has to be the same size as the one that was proposed, or whatever. I just, I think in order for Dave to go forward, and for the district to go forward, we have to ask, answer some of those questions, and I think one of the first one is, is Jackson itself. What are the wishes of the board, or thoughts of the board, when we talk about a facility in Jackson?
I'll go first, if you don't mind. I've waffled on this one since the task force gave their presentation, and no one here, thank you for your involvement in that again. I think there's some great ideas that come in there in terms of the economies of scale that can be found through consolidation. I'm very curious to see the housing start numbers as it comes from the village of Jackson leadership, hopefully in the next week or so. But looking at the details that were in their maps tonight, the numbers that they put out in terms of the housing starts, anticipated going forwards, I mean, we're looking at a community of 7,200 people. And you've got Kewaskom, that's a community of less than 4,500 that's entirely owned school district. I just personally can't see a community of 7,500 people in Jackson not having a local elementary school. I know that that means some tough decisions financially for us in the West Bend School District, but I think it's pretty obvious, based on the data shared tonight, there's a lot more growth happening in Jackson than there is in West Bend. And the devil's in the details in terms of the overall numbers, but I believe a community of that size on that type of growth curve warrants having a K-4 facility in their neighborhood.
You were looking over here before.
I mean, I'm going to echo what Paul said, although I wasn't, I maybe didn't have to think about it quite as much, because I live in Jackson and my three children went to Jackson Elementary. It was walkable for us. It was a community, it's a community school. You feel like you're, you know, the parents know people at pickup. It just feels, it's a community, and I can't imagine leaving a community with 7,000 people without a school, a public school there. It's really hard for me to stomach.
Echoing the two comments, I think the one thing that I was really struggling with, I think it was pointed out clearly tonight that there's growth to the south of our, in our county. I mean, that's where the growth is really, and obviously Kewaskom has some growth going as well. I was waffling with the idea of where would be the best location for this school. I mean, I've really thought long and hard, would something closer to Highway 45 be easier for people for drop-off and pickup and whatnot? And then tonight, that's specifically why I asked the question. Do you believe that's the best location? And being able to tag team with the Boys and Girls Club and their after-school programs absolutely makes sense. I also think that we need to have real serious consideration about the bus problems, the busing problems that we have. I mean, we have a massive shortage of bus drivers, and those of you that work in West Bend or even are trying to hire some positions, you know how hard that is right now. I don't, I would guess that driving a bus is a great job, but I just don't see people lining up around the corner by the thousands to drive buses. I think that takes a special person. So I think we need to be very realistic about, you know, trying to bus kids further out of a community that, you know, might actually cost us more money. So I'm definitely in favor of keeping a school in Jackson. I think we need to be realistic about the size, and we need to be very specific about the growth. I mean, as we look at, if West Bend has any growth to the south of the city, so I'm talking kind of that N-N and, you know, south of Paradise, basically, is what I'm talking. I mean, I think we'll have to look at district lines in the future, and are some of those kids, they'd be bussed anyways, whether they're bussed to McLean or whether they're bussed to Jackson. What's the better location, and how do we accommodate those families as well?
I thought, excuse me, I thought that the case that was made for the growth in Jackson, both in the close immediate future as well as beyond, was the most compelling thing that I've heard here tonight, along with the idea that there is growth coming from the south to the north. You talked about that, Nancy. I agree. I think that it would be ill-advised for us not to have a school there. I think we need to be the partner for all of our, all of our communities. And I don't know that we would be a good partner if we, if we didn't invest in a school in Jackson.
I was going to piggyback on Nancy's comment about location, because I also share the concern that, you know, is having a new facility a mile north of our southern boundary the right space? But I appreciate the comments about the community center. And again, if we think 25 years out, and you look at where Jackson's growing, the growth in West Bend, south on P, the subdivision that's been there, what, about 10 years now, south of Lynch GMC, and that's going to continue growing, and then you've got the 216-acre commercial development coming online, 20, 25 years from now, is there a possibility that there is another elementary school in the northwest segment of Jackson to the southern end of West Bend, possibly? We don't need to make that decision now, but looking at where those trends are potentially going, I think that's something that we need to keep our finger on the pulse of as a board.
If I start a little high level and then maybe get a little bold with my last statement, in order for our school district to offer the quality programming that we do at a high school level down to a K-4, we can't afford to turn our back on Jackson and a whole student population, parent population, and tax base that's feeding the whole great services that we offer here and the great staff we have here. So we can't turn our backs on Jackson, is my opinion. Being bold, do we put a K through 6 school down there? And get into how do we fund it? There's a lot of facility needs, and maybe that's a secondary conversation. I will, I brought this up before on funding it, using the term building as a service, getting out of the taxpayer base and the community base of being responsible for facilities. I think the trend across the United States is going to be for public sector communities to rent and lease space for their schools. So I know Wisconsin laws don't allow us to do that right now, but other state laws do. Let's be bold, and let's talk to our legislators and get them to have laws similar to other states in the country, and then we won't have to go to our tax base to actually fund a school in Jackson. We could fund the school in Jackson with a potential model that way, and then use additional other funds to make improvements at high school, and then we do have other elementary schools to decide on as well. So that's my initial comments there.
Just a real quick one, Kurt, I think, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we have the ability to lease buildings in Wisconsin too. The problem is that for our district, because we are a low-spending district, all of that money will come out of Fund 10. So we don't have flexibility in our general fund or Fund 10 to lease the facility, because you're, in essence, buying the facility or renting the facility, they're doing it for a profit, which certainly isn't a bad deal. But if we, in our case, the way you would pay for that would be to take it out of Fund 10, which is already strapped and going south because of, you know, enrollment and some other things. And so that's the biggest challenge would be, where do we get the money to pay for the lease? Not that it can't happen, but the way it would happen is to take it out of our Fund 10 general fund, which is tight for everything else. Is that right, Andy? Okay, I think that's correct. Not that you can't, but that's.
Yeah, we leased the space for the Pathway School, for instance.
But it comes right out of our general fund, and so that becomes an ongoing expense based on that.
As it relates to Jackson Elementary School, I think it'd be devastating to close a school in Jackson. I think it'd be devastating for that, for the village, but I think it'd be devastating for the West Bend School District in general. But, you know, we've got to continue to look at the big picture and declining enrollment. And I hate to skip down to some of your other questions on here, but, you know, does it make sense to close the Ross Building? That was a recommendation from the task force. Well, if we've got room to move that program somewhere else in our district, then absolutely we should close that building and move it somewhere else. Same with, with this building. If we have room at Badger or the high school for you to have an office, and the rest of the people who work here, well, then great, we should absolutely do that. So, you know, I hate to say it, but the way our declining enrollment trends look, we probably will have to close an elementary school. Do I think it should be Jackson? No, I don't. Even though that one's in terrible shape, I think it would be devastating for that community if we, if we closed it and then replace it with something. So I, Jackson should have an elementary school. I feel very strongly about that. But we also got to keep very realistic about our declining enrollment. And if that doesn't turn around, which I don't expect that it will, of all the data we've talked about over the past couple of years, we have to be prepared for potentially closing one of our elementary schools here. I think it'd be easier to do that, because we've got three other schools in West Bend, but Jackson losing one would be, in my opinion, devastating.
So that is the number, second question. It really goes, do board members have an opinion on the optimal enrollment size? And we currently have, we have four neighborhood schools in Jackson, anywhere from 500 at McLean to 350 or 360 or whatever we have at Green Tree at this point in time, but it, it varies. And so, you know, if you look at the research that I have looked at, if you were going to start from scratch, and you were going to build brand-new schools in a evenly distributed, in a community that's growing, 500 is the size for the best economy. And you go from 500 up to 600, and as you get to 600, then you look to develop a new school. Because once you get over 600, now you lose, you have to have extra PE space, you have extra art rooms, you have a bigger environment that elementary kids, can you do it? You certainly can. Is it what's favorable, not nationwide, not statewide, it just doesn't bode well, okay? But in our case, if you look at our enrollment, and I said that, man, we're going to project that we're going to be a little over 1,800 kids in elementary. In order to have 1,800 kids in elementary, you really need capacity for a few more than 2,000, because you just, you can't, you can't have it at 100%. 80% is optimum. You can live with 90%, but you can't live with 100% because you've got kids in and out all the time, okay? And so if you think about that, you know, if, if you have 400 in Jackson, and we don't have 400, but we will soon, or someday, well, that leaves, so 400, and you have capacity for 5 or capacity for 450, then I have to have capacity for, for the rest of the kids in West Bend, okay? And for that to happen, we have to take one, you know, we have capacity at Green Tree when they did the remodel, okay? McLean certainly needs some things done to it as well, but they've ran at 500 several years and were always up in the over 450 range, okay? So that's there. I then have to take, or you have to take either Decorah or Fair Park and do some addition when we talk about a potential referendum. You then have to look at one of those two schools where you're going to add some space onto it, because we don't have the capacity at either Decorah or Fair Park to make that happen. So I couldn't get all of the kids in West Bend in three schools, period. And even as our enrollment goes south a little bit farther, we're hoping that it's plateaued in the elementary, that the decline is actually going to be Silverbrook, Badger, and the high school as these elementary's students go up. But even if the plateau is there, I do not have the space in West Bend to go from four schools to three without doing a renovation in addition to one of those two schools. Dave, is that pretty accurate? Okay, so, questions?
So with a 500-student school, we're looking at K through 4, so we're probably looking at, give or take, four sections of each, if we're at 500 kids. Speaking as a parent whose kids went to McLean, you're right, we've been over 500 many years, and minus those of you that have been around for a while, the trailer years with the art class out there, the music class, you know, I really can't say that we felt the pinch, potentially maybe with lunch, because, you know, they're trying to eat fast and get the next group in. But I, for one, don't see a problem with, you know, a max of 500 students. I'd be a little concerned if we start to get over that number, for the sake of, can our schools accommodate busing and getting in and out? And we all know what fun the drop-off and pickup is when you have 500 kids at a elementary school. It's a little tight and crazy. So I'd be in favor of 500, no more than 500, though, per school personally.
So is that 500 the effective, and the gross capacity would be, say, 600?
Right. If I had three schools with a little over 500 capacity in West Bend, and another school in Jackson for their capacity and their growth, we would be real close. We would, we would, I'd have to do the numbers, we'd have to pencil out the class sizes, but whatever. But what I'm just saying is that we can do that, and we have to take back some rooms at Green Tree that were maybe designed as classrooms that have been converted into other things. The same is true at McLean, but McLean really hasn't had the opportunity to convert those to other classrooms, because they've always had kids in them. But Decorah or Fair Park, and I don't want to say one or the other, but Decorah or Fair Park has to have an addition on so that you can get to that number, because I can't get to that number, and so maybe it's 600 rather than 500. And so if we're going to add on to a school, rather than add on to two, we'd add on a little bit more to one, and that'd become some of the overflow if we get to that spot. But I truly have to have additional capacity at one of those two schools.
So if we were to add on to Fair Park or Decorah, in either scenario, we're perpetuating the albatross that's around our neck today. Well, what if we were to take the task force recommendation and say, we're going to build a new elementary school of 500-student capacity to replace those two facilities, and we get current technology, current efficiencies, design it to support traffic flow for drop-off and pickup? The issue is where, but I think that gets us the economies of scale and gets us away from the challenges that either of those facilities currently bring with them.
Absolutely correct. There's no question that Fair Park or Decorah, neither one of them is up to speed without doing some additional, and we've got lighting in some of the rooms that are 12 candle power, the hallways, and it should be 35. And so, so it's not just adding on. Ideally, the best scenario would be replace- Ideally, the best scenario would be replace something in Jackson and have a new facility in West Bend as well. Whether, you know, whether we can do that or not, that's your opinion, your discussion, your, how we go forward with that. But that really would be, rather than putting good money into bad, you know, the oldest school that we have is McLean, but McLean is probably structurally sounder than most, okay? We have done some infrastructure things. It needs some facelift, it needs some, there's no question, the front entrance, the security component, there's some things that need to happen at McLean as well. But it's, it's not gonna fall down, and neither, none of them are gonna fall down. But both Decorah and Fair Park need structural improvements as well as an addition. And so, Paul, you're 100% correct.
Well, you know, I'm a visual person, so it's unfortunate. I don't have a Sharpie here and I can draw a picture. But I mean, as we look at West Bend, I mean, if we're a simple, and we're not, but imagine if we're a square, you know, we've kind of got a school then, Green Tree, I'll call that the north, and McLean is kind of central. But we're really leaving out, then, kind of our eastern, you know, schools. We've got a problem on the east side of the city, I guess, lack of a better word, and then we've got Jackson to the south. So, you know, both Fair Park and Decorah are kind of on the eastern edge of our community. So, I mean, if we were looking at doing something, I don't know what the percentage is of kids who bus versus walk to those two schools. But I mean, I think, you know, we'd have to look at, if we're gonna build a new school, I think it needs to be on the eastern side of the city somewhere. I don't know the land particularly that might be available. Or if we'd look at, you know, closing Fair Park and rebuilding on the Decorah site, I don't know if that could be scraped, I don't know what the acreage is there off the top of my head, but I'm sure someone like Dave Ross would probably know that.
Maybe about 13 acres of Fair Park?
Maybe, okay.
What's Fair Park?
Uh, I don't know.
I mean, and Fair Park's kind of, you know, geographically, I think it has some limitations with the courthouse being next door, and I know the drop-off and all that stuff is kind of ugly up there. So, I mean, as we're looking at that, I guess, I just wanna throw that out, that we wouldn't wanna leave the eastern part of our city high and dry and say, hey, I think we'd build something on Paradise, and, you know, that wouldn't accommodate them. So, that would just be my commentary about the east side of the city.
You know, so, if, you know, we can come together, we can bring back some data based on what you're talking about as far as some things for you, but is that, is that what you would like us to do? Would you like us to look at a couple, two or three different options? One would be to start the plan to see a new elementary in Jackson and what size that would be and get some estimates for that. The second part would be, what would the cost be to renovate and add on to one of those two facilities? And a third option would be, what would be the cost to replace those two facilities with one facility someplace on the east and probably not necessarily northeast, but not all the way south part, not down too far, you know, and kinda go from there. But that seemed like that would be some information that the board would like to see.
I think option number three is, I personally don't think it's gonna happen. I don't think, I don't think our community would do a referendum for a new school in Jackson and a new school here and maybe throw in renovations at the high school, and now you're looking at...
Yep, no question. And so, that's, you know, and you can do some nice things with renovating one of those buildings, but you still have a 56-year-old, 50- to 60-year-old building that's maybe not as structurally sound as a McLean. You certainly have to do what you have to do to make it a new, long-term facility. But I can bring those to you with the idea that I personally think Joel is maybe correct in that it's gonna be a really hard sell to do two new buildings and do the work necessary at the high school all at the same time.
Dave, could you remind us, in the citizens' study that they did, and I know you provided the information, the grade or the grade level that you gave to Decorah and Fair Park, were they not, were they not like...
Pretty low.
I mean, I think Jackson was the worst, correct? And then...
Jackson was the worst, Fair Park was second worst, and...
Is that the FCI number?
Yes.
Decorah's 20% and Fair Park is 31.
And Jackson was?
And the reason Fair Park is lower than Decorah, a couple of different ones, but one is the steam system as opposed to the hot water system, that we know that it's not too far down the road and we're gonna have to replace some of the heat system in Fair Park because it's a steam and it's just, it becomes difficult for us to maintain, very expensive. And that's one of the things that, that if we continue to keep a Decorah, a Fair Park, that's a pretty big ticket item, more so than some of the other window projects or roof projects, other things.
So, kind of what Joel's comment, and I realize this might be a lot of work, so please feel free to say, heck, no, that's not gonna work. But, you know, if we looked at this and we said, okay, closing Fair Park, we save, I don't know, that would be a Dave Ross question, what do we save in utilities? What do we save in whatever? What are we gonna be able to sell that potential property for, dollar-wise? And then, if we looked at Decorah, I guess I'd like to see, what are the, when we did this comparison for Jackson and we said, okay, to remodel Jackson to get it to what we would hopefully want it to be versus build new, you know, really, that kind of came out to be very close. I mean, I remember, we weren't off by, you know, 10 million or anything, it was, it was pretty close. So, I guess I'd like to see that kind of a comparison. What would it take to, and when I say get Decorah to what we need, I'm talking update major systems and really get it to be almost brand-new. But, you know, if Joel's idea is that, you know, the appetite from the public is that we can't build two new schools, I guess I wanna know as a board member that it really is financially a sound decision to remodel an old building that needs a lot of updates versus building new. Now, I am certainly the queen of refurbishing and do-it-yourself, okay, those of you that know me. So, I'm not all about just building new, but I certainly want to not throw good money at a bad project. And I certainly don't wanna be the taxpayer 10 years from now when the board's coming to 'em again going, hey, guess what? We really needed to do more than what we could afford five years ago, and now it costs five times more. So, I'd really like to make some sound decisions and have good information on what the comparisons are.
We will try to have that available ASAP. And, but there's other, two other questions that I think we can address, even though we're a little past the time. But is there any concern with the board for us to move Rolfs if we have the space available someplace else for that to happen?
No.
We have visited with the people at Rolfs, we've talked to Sharon, I've talked to Emily, I've talked to others. I'd like to be able to do it for the 2021 school year, I don't have that space available. We're halfway there, three-fourths of the way, but not all the way. So, at this point in time, we have scheduled a meeting to talk, and Silverbrook is probably the most logical place for that. We would take a house in Silverbrook and turn it into a, our Head Start program. We think that there's space available that's one level, it's, would be an excellent addition, and we can do that. We can't do that until the 21, 22 school year. But we would plan for it this year, next year, so that it's a seamless move when that happens. The second part was question number four, is this facility here? Are there, is there, if we had the space available to move this facility and maybe it's not all in one spot, maybe, you know, the business office, the HR department, and the superintendent's office is in Badger, and someplace else is, you know, the next one is someplace else, is there any concern? And that can't happen quite as early as Rolfs, but is that something that we should start looking at as a possible move as well?
Well, I guess, I'm not, first of all, I'm not opposed to either of the moves, or I guess that there's three scenarios, possible scenarios. I guess I'd like to know the same thing. I mean, it's obviously, it sounds like Rolfs is an easier move. There's gonna have to be some remodeling to move the business office to Badger, I assume, we'd probably flip in a classroom or something. So, I guess, as a board member, I'd like to know what those costs are. Same for if you were to move other departments to other locations. I guess I'd like to know what the potential remodeling costs would be versus what the operations costs are here.
Right. One of the things that we even have talked about is, if we moved Rolfs, the Head Start program out, would we take that facility and move part of our student program that we have down in this level? We move some of the other things over to Rolfs as part of our move and then move the rest someplace else? Just because I don't know if there's a lot of value in the Rolfs Building just based on the location. It's not a bad building, it's just based on the location, if that's a very sellable commercial piece of property. Where if we move from here to there and then some of this went someplace else, this piece of property, location-wise, is a much better facility. So, maybe there's some more value to, and that's down the road a ways, and I don't, I think the Rolfs part, without moving anything else other than Rolfs, we can do that in two years if you are okay with us at least investigating that possible move. We would, we would do that real soon.
I see, yeah. I would say why not, absolutely.
Dave, do we have an FCI number on ESC?
I didn't see it in the deck. I guess my only hesitation with splitting this staff is, and I don't know the level of interaction between, you know, manager to the line level, if they're not in the same building, does that create challenges with checking in and, you know, dropping conversations and so forth? And I'm all about saving money like everybody else, but at the same time, moving in two years to move again in two years doesn't seem very efficient either. And I still, to Joel's point on, you know, consolidating and relocating as recommended by the task force, if we look at, whether it's a remodel or a wholesale new building for the elementary facility in West Bend, if that can incorporate a district office on that campus, I think we need to look at that.
And that's, we don't have the space for that yet. So, that's a discussion for several years down the road, because we can't move out of this building for several years, even if there's a possibility. But Rolfs truly is a, something that can happen in two years, okay? And the last thing, and I, you know, I'm gonna suggest that maybe we can come back to the high school, unless you wanna continue some of the high school, we can, we can bring that back next meeting. But with the high school, just to give you a heads-up, that Tim and I are gonna go, we've had one meeting already with Rain Park to talk about some joint services, is, can we do some things there, can they do some things here? And so, we're gonna go and have another meeting out at Rain Park real soon. Tim is, I think he's got it all lined up, and so, we're gonna do that, we're gonna take, you know, we think, it's not as easy as we think, or it would be led to believe, because they've got as much bureaucracy as anybody, and we've got bureaucracy. And ours is probably a lot easier to cut through the hoops than some of theirs is because that's a regional institution, not a local one. But based on our initial conversation, we think we can significantly enhance our building trades program by offering it at Rain Park as opposed to doing some things in remodeling that in West Bend. And so, that discussion is taking place, we'll continue to have that discussion. Hopefully, we can have something in place for next year that we can do something to start that whole process, and that was one of the things that came out of that task force, is to look at our CTE programs to see if there's some mutual sharing that can take place.
Your letter D on courtyard upgrades to commons, what was, what is that?
Well, one of the things that, that task force had talked about is looking at the high school, and with that high school, that courtyard, what would happen if you enclosed that courtyard and turned it into a commons area, okay? We don't think we have the heating capacity for that to take place. That would require a major undertaking for us to do that. But as we look and go forward with some of the things that we might wanna consider at the high school, is that one of them, okay? Don's opinion, and Don doesn't vote you do, Don's opinion is that if we're gonna have extra space at the high school because we're going from 2,100 to eventually 1,600 kids in the high school, even though that courtyard place would be a very nice, attractive area, I don't know if I need an extra, I don't know, 20,000, 10,000, 25,000, I don't know how large it is, but it would be a large addition, additional heated space in the high school when our high school numbers are less than what they were at one point in time. And so, the only reason it's there is because that was one of the discussions in the task force.
I pick on that one because I agree with you that with our declining enrollment and we're potentially closing a school, we're selling this building, selling that building, I don't know why you'd add on square foot, square feet. That's, the pictures are pretty, would it be a nice to have? Sure, but it doesn't make any sense to me. So, that's why I just pick on that one before we adjourn tonight.
You know, same with the locker room updates. And maybe the locker room updates are part of what we can do with an extra 500, I mean, that's, they need to be done, okay? No question about that. Is that something that, that maybe we tackle earlier rather than later, just like we tackled the library earlier rather than later? I don't know if we have the funds to do that, but that certainly, you know, needs to be on that.
Well, I think the locker rooms are a concern. The fact that we don't have working showers in some is very concerning to me. So, however we're gonna tackle that, it probably needs to be on the, let's talk about it tomorrow conversation, because we really have to get some working showers or all of them at least up to working standards for guests who are coming here and our students as well.
Yep.
If the board would... I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna comment on, if you look at some of our facilities compared to others in the conference and not saying, hey, we're never gonna compete with your homesteads and other of our neighbors. But we do have to come up to a level to attract, we, our customers are the community and students. So, we do have to come up to a level. I think we have a unique for public-private partnerships with at least some of those maybe more athletics and arts and trades facilities, that we can get some private partnerships to donate funds for some of those areas. So, I would like to volunteer for any pushes as we maybe segment some of these, if we're selling the whole package to the community, that we're gonna try to raise $5 million for funds in these arts, sports, trades, and have the community take part of that. So, that's just, just my thoughts there. We got some generous companies just, in the community and as, and members of the community moving in, as we saw by economic development, they would love to get their, I just think, goodwill to the community out there. We just gotta package it and ask them for it.
You know, I agree with Kurt's comments, but something that always concerns me is that, you know, here we are going back to the well and asking for donations, and I think there's so many of our sports groups and our other groups that are also trying to do the same thing, when the students are trying to raise funds, that I think some of these situations, we need to take care of ourself, and we're gonna have to maintain them. So, if we get this marvelous donation, which would be great, of whatever, remember, we still have to maintain it over the next several years. And, you know, when I think about, what do companies wanna give to, and, you know, I realize the example of a brat fry is a little, you know, much smaller scale, but, I mean, I think we have so, we have cut funding because we've had to for so many of our arts and our sports and that type of thing. I'd hate to continue to hit the same companies over and over again for donations when, you know, some of these things I think we need to be taking care of as a business. I mean, we are a business, you know, we are a district, but we are a business. And, I mean, if I own whatever Josh Mo private company, I'm not going to West Bend Mutual to say, hey, how would you like to name my front doors so I can get some new ones? You know, I'm saying, gee, I gotta take care of that myself, you know, where I think West Bend Mutual might feel a little more apt to say, gee, I'd like to give, you know, whatever dollars for an enhancement as opposed to a requirement or a need.
I think that really goes to anything we do, new facility-wise especially, going forward. If we build a new elementary school, we better... If we build a new elementary school, we better have that 25-year plan ready to rock and roll, so that that school stays up to date and is maintained, and, you know, having our facility maintenance budget over $2 million at this point. When you got here, Dave, I don't think it was even, it was just a hair over half a million, if I remember you telling me it.
It was a billion that first year I was here, more than a thousand, three thousand.
Yeah. I mean, we're looking at years and years and years of having maintenance, annual maintenance budgets of 300,000, 600, finally a million, now we're up to 2 million. That's got to continue to grow. My kid's playing in a basketball deal where we go to all kinds of different high schools, I was at Waukesha North yesterday. That school's not new, but it sure looks nice. And, you know, you talk to some of those districts, and it's because they put a million bucks into their high school every single summer, and it's to do things like the library, or maybe a locker room, or maybe it's just simply paint. Well, we haven't been doing that ever at our high school. So I'm pleased to see the library project, you know, is underway, and we budgeted for that, but that budget's got to continue to go up. Instead of being half a million, hopefully next year it's another half a million, and get it up to three, four million bucks. But, so anyway, just back to your point, I think, anything we do facility-wise, we have to be able to maintain it, take care of it, and of course, budget for it. Well, it's eight o'clock at this point, so...
We will try to bring some, we will bring some information back at the February meeting, as we planned the February 4th meeting, we'll look at the agenda to see if there's an opportunity to continue some of this discussion then. If not, maybe we need to, the second meeting in February, a committee, the whole meeting, at that point in time, we're going to bring to you our proposal for a balanced budget. We know that, as we're talking about spending on one side, we're going to bring to you about a million and a half, million, $600,000 worth of potential cuts, because we have less enrollment, and we have to reflect that. And so last year we cut 2 million out of the budget, this year we'll cut about 1.6 out of the budget, and, you know, it's not fun, it's not fortunate, but if you don't do it when you need to do it, then it escalates, just like our facilities have escalated at this point in time. So we'll try to have that ready for you, and then we'll have another interesting meeting in February.